Welcome to the Starting with some announcements, the first one is, time is running out on selecting a trash toter. And the Department of Public Works wants to remind everyone on Town Refuge Collection that you have until this Friday, March 10th, to select a toter size. And this can be done on the town's website at, there's a link right on the homepage, or you can call 617-596-1376 and place your order there. And though the deadline for choosing a toter size is this Friday, the service is slated to start at the very end of May. So, and if you don't choose, you'll get the default size, which is 35 gallons, which is big enough for about three bags. But you'll have, if, 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 there will be a grace period of a few months at the beginning, so you can switch sizes.
I was at the BNA Brookline Neighborhood Alliance meeting last night, and I heard the people from Andy Papasturgen's department were out front with the size of the toters. What they were telling people was that, you, you, once you get the toter, if you don't like it, you have 30 days to change it for no cost. And then after that, it's, you can change it, it's a $25 sanitation, cleaning kind of fee, because they have to, they give it to somebody else, but they need to do that. They need to clean it. So, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, so I think we're ready to move on to our-
Actually, I would like to make one of them. I just wanted to bring you up to date a little bit on the high school expand, building expansion advisory committee. We have been meeting regularly. Our next meeting is Monday night, and I believe it'll be in the school committee room, and that's the actual committee itself. And then we'll hear from the architects, who've been busy trying to figure out a massing plan, and some preliminary cost estimates. And then on Wednesday night, next week, which is March 15th, we will have a community meeting to present this massing plan. And that room, I'm not positive of yet, because we're trying to make sure we're able to tape that for putting on the, on BIG's website, so people can actually watch it. And, but, you know, it's a lot of give and take. There's a lot of information in play, and how do you match up the issues of what the high school needs with the renovation and the code compliance issues that you would have to do, because we do have a wood frame building for most of the high school, and that gets us into, believe it or not, seismic code compliance issues. Even though none of us can remember an earthquake here, there are earthquake codes that we have to meet. So, it's a lot, it's a lot of interesting material, and you're welcome to come to the meeting, and anyone else is as well.
Coming up is Climate Week at the end of the month, March 27th through April 2nd. And as we get closer, we'll have more information. There's a website, what is the website? Looking at the brochure. I don't see the website listed. Ah, Climate, ClimateWeek2017.org, O-R-G. Okay, moving on to our miscellaneous calendar, we have a couple of minutes. We're going to hold the February 28th minutes, as they weren't ready. Any, any changes to the executive session minutes of January 17th and February 14th? Okay, so I'll move that we approve the executive session minutes for January 17th and February 14th. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of accepting a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the State Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the police department's efforts to order and enforce child safety regulations involving the proper installation of car seats. Chief O'Leary.
Good evening. One of our most popular outreach programs is the, the program that we have where we install car seats for newly, newly expecting parents or new parents. And we give them some guidance on how to use their car seat properly, and how to move it in and out, and things like that. We do run into several people that are unable to afford the newer model and the most safe model of car seat equipment for their children, and we had an opportunity to apply for $2,000. We're looking to take that $2,000 and put it towards the purchase of car seats that we can give to people that are in need, so they can make sure their kids have a safe ride.
Okay. Any questions, comments about this grant? I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $2,000 from the State Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the police department's efforts to order and enforce child safety regulations involving the proper installation of car seats. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a change order for $131,946 for interior masonry repairs at the devotion school. Mr. Wiggly.
Good evening.
You're looking awful tapper. I don't know if I've ever seen you in a tie.
Yeah, he always says tons.
Not a jacket.
Yeah.
Something looks different.
Point Collins lighter, perhaps.
Ah, there you go.
In any event, the, the change order before you tonight's change order number 6, the amount of $131,946. This is for interior masonry repairs in the 1913 wing. As you recall, a chief component of the project was to retain the historic 1913 section of the building, but it's really the facade of the building, the interior is gutted. And when it was gutted, it, you know, to make way for the new program, it was found that the interior masonry behind all the walls was in serious disrepair, cracks, holes, openings, and it was determined by the structural engineer that the masonry repairs are necessary for structural integrity. This was not something that we could have anticipated until the demo was completed, and the cost was verified by the architect's cost estimator. The change order has been approved by the building commission and the school committee, and there is some indication that perhaps this change order would be reimbursable by the NSBA. Yes?
Yeah, I can see Tony took me on the tour a little while ago, and the old, interior walls of the old section of the building are brick, and every time they needed to run plumbing or electrical through, they just kind of carved out the brick. So, that's, that's the issue there. But I'm, I'm happy to see this change order is for less than Tony warned me it might be, and we are still within our contingencies, are we not, Mr. Wiggly?
This is coming out of the change order line item, because of the question that I, the potential that I mentioned to you a few minutes ago, potential NSBA reimbursement.
Okay. Okay. I will move that we approve the change order number 6, in the amount of $131,496 for interior masonry repairs to the 1913 wing, in connections with the renovation and additions project at the Edward Devotion School. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of authorizing the town administrator to sign and execute utility licenses with RCN Comcast and Crown Castle for relocation of utilities in connection with the same devotion school project. Mr. Wiggly, is this you again?
Yes, me, indeed. Currently, the, at the, on the discontinued devotion street, there are two utility poles. And the poles are owned by Ebosus. And on the poles are RCN Comcast and Crown Castle. And those poles need to be removed to facilitate the utility work underground, and also for the upgrade program work, such as the soccer field and other site improvements. And so, this is to relocate them elsewhere on the site underground, so that they're out of the way, and that those poles and the wiring on them can be removed in a timely fashion, so that the utility work may happen this spring and summer.
Any questions or comments? Are we paying for that, or?
We are paying for the infrastructure.
Okay.
They will pay for their own relocation. But, the infrastructure payment, it's coming out of the contingencies within the GMP, so it's not a change to the contract overall.
Okay. I'll move that we authorize the town administrator to sign and execute utility licenses to RCN Comcast and Crown Castle for the relocation of utilities in connection with the Edward Devotion School project. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much, folks.
And the next item is a question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $594,000 with Valhees Restoration and Weatherproofing Corp. for repairs at the fire station number one and the water department. And this is roof and exterior repairs, a lot of money. Mr. Masak.
Good evening. This is for continuing appropriation for the walls and roof repair to our buildings. We do one or two projects a year, and we're gonna do, this is the only project we're gonna do for this summer. Over at the water department, we had an opportunity, we had already designed the project, to put it back out to bid. We didn't have the funding at the time. We have the funding now, and that'll include the skylight over at the water department.
Is this in, within budget?
It sure is. We've always taken the op, I'll be very brief, we've always taken the opportunity, we're always the first out, and I've been told by the bidders that we're getting very good pricing when, when we bid it in December, January.
Now, are you concerned, there seems to be a pretty big disparity between the low bid and the next one up. Are you concerned by that?
No, because this, I have spoken, we have not worked with Calhess, but Russo Bar has, and they're a very reputable contractor. And basically, he said, I did speak with the contractor, and he said, he gave it to the town at cost, with no profit. That happens.
Is it, is that because they want future business, and they want us to think of them favorably?
He's coming out of winter, and he just wanted to get his guys busy.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I'll take it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move that we approve and execute the contract in the amount of $594,000 with Valhess Restoration Weatherproofing Corp. for roof and exterior wall repair at the fire station number one and the water department. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the next item is a question of approving a transfer in the amount of $7,200 from the BAA trust fund account to the Arts Council matching grants account.
I don't see anyone here, because we're trying to cover the advisory committee budget hearings as well. But this is a standard transfer, this is one of the transfers that we do on an annual basis. We move money from the BAA trust fund account to, to the Arts Council, and this is done every year, our budget planning.
Questions, comments? I'll move therefore that we approve the transfer in the amount of $7,200 from the BAA trust account to the Arts Council matching grants account. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I have two temporary wine and malt beverage licenses, both are pending police approval, and this vote will be dependent on obtaining the police department approval. I'll move them in.
Okay, one of them is, the date is already passed. Are we retroactively giving them a license?
March 16th, and-
The Chamber of Commerce event-
March 11th.
Was supposed to be on February 9th, according to their paperwork?
I think that was snowed out.
Oh, okay.
That was the snowstorm.
Okay.
I think.
Why wouldn't their original temporary license carry over to the ring date?
Because it has a specific vote, and we didn't vote a ring date, so we'll just vote
a new one.
Yeah.
So, I'll move that we grant the temporary wine and malt beverage sales license to the Chamber of Commerce for a fundraising event to be held on Thursday, March 16th, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Teen Center, 40 Aspen Wall Avenue. The event was previously approved by the board on January 13th-
I should've read the whole thing.
But was canceled due to snow, and this, this is pending police approval. Oh, and then the other one is temporary wine and malt beverage sales license to Lincoln School for Trivia Night on March 11th, Saturday, from 6:00 to 11:30 at the Lincoln School Cafeteria. This too is pending police approval. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Can I just add one thing? I think we should give some thought to whether we want to grant these license to continue in the event of a snow day or something. I mean, it just seems to me you have a unnecessary expenditure of time, and that's both on our part, as well as their part.
Okay.
A little, it's a little thing, but, you know.
Yeah. So, let's move on to our main calendar, and the first item is a question of approving a special use permit submitted by Conventures in connection with the AIDS Walk Boston to be held on Sunday, June 4th. And this, this walk just cuts through a little piece of Brookline. It starts at the Hatch Shell, goes down the Charles River, winds its way into Brookline at Comet Avenue in Amory, goes up Amory to Beacon Street, and then down Beacon Street into Kenmore Square. So, anything else anyone wishes to say? They're not appearing before us tonight.
I, I would just comment that I do think this is one of the oldest of the charitable walks. And I do remember that my children, when they were in, you know, sort of middle school age and high school age, were going on this walk. So, you're talking a lot of years, maybe 25, 30 years. And I, so I just want to commend them for their perseverance and dedication to this charitable cause.
Sure. Okay, I will therefore move that we authorize, that we approve a special use permit submitted by Conventures Inc. in connection with the AIDS Walk Boston, be held on Sunday, June 4th. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is a question of authorizing the filling of Public Safety Business Manager in the Police and Fire Public Safety Departments. Chief O'Leary.
Yes. As you know, we have a business manager that runs both of the, both the Police and Fire Departments' business office. The combined budgetary money going through is in excess of $30 million. I think it's safe to say that he bills, or that office bills probably an additional eight to 10 million dollars in services that are rendered in a detailed billing. And they also account for all of our collections of the traffic monies from the meters and the parking fines. So, it's a lot of money that goes in there. Anthony Insaldi was with us for a little over 12 years. I have to say that he made my job very easy. He's very smart, he streamlined a lot of things, but he wanted to move on. He applied for an assistant administrator's job in Littleton, and he is gonna be leaving us on March 24th. So, he leaves a big void, and there's a lot of critical information, we are in budget seasons. We will be getting to the year in closing, so we'd like to post this job as soon as possible, and move to fill it. I did speak to Chief Ward about this, and he's in full agreement with us moving forward as expeditiously as possible.
This, this position isn't subject to civil service procedures.
It is not. It'll be an outside, inside and outside vast posting to fill the position.
Okay. Any questions?
Sure. Yeah, of course, we always ask to make sure that your, the pool of candidates that you select from is as diverse as possible. I just wanna commend you, in a sense, your hiring among police officers and other categories is pretty good relative to other departments in town. That is not the case with respect to police administration. So, you know, this is especially an area where I think we want to make sure that the, the people we're looking at is, you know, very diverse, and includes, you know, African-Americans, Hispanics, and Asians.
We hope to draw them into the pool. I know that, talking to the HR department, they will be doing a considerable posting of it, to fill it. We've had, I know the last time we did it, we had a diverse pool, and we had some really good traces to make, and we chose Anthony, who actually did very well for us, so.
Okay. Any other questions and comments? I will move that we authorize the filling of the Public Safety Business Manager in the Police and Fire Public Safety Departments. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
We have a number of budget reviews, and the first one is IT. Mr. Stokes, come join the party. Tell us about your department and your department's budget, and what's going on.
Good evening. Thank you again for the opportunity. The FY18 budget as presented is for $1.896,399, which I'm pleased to say represents a reduction of $12,182 over FY17. The predominant driver for the reduction is largely, again, due to some consolidations around technology contracts that we have. So, as I've alluded to in past budget discussions, as we continue to upgrade technology, sometimes this is the ability to consolidate existing contracts. So, you don't replace A with another version of A, there's, as technology gets better, hopefully you buy less of things. Doesn't always work out that way, but, you know, certainly in this case here, we were able to leverage some savings. So, with that said, I'll certainly highlight, I think, one of the most important initiatives we have going on this year was its rollout of the new permitting system. We're in the final mile, as they say, and our line departments are working diligently, and spending lots of quality time with the IT department, learning how the new system works, getting all the data correct, and, you know, certainly doing all their due diligence, and making sure that everything will work fabulously when we roll this out approximately mid-April to late April. So, that's probably the biggest initiative that we have going on. We've also rolled out a number of new features on the website this year, predominantly around open government. And if you haven't seen it, we have our new open checkbook, that's, I think, prominently featured right in the middle of the webpage, which, again, I think provides a level of transparency to the public, that I think caters, and this is what I think is very different this year, it actually caters to probably, I would say, laypeople versus, in addition to the budget insiders. So, our previous open checkbook was, was very helpful, and it provided a little detail, which I think was, was tremendous. However, you really still needed to know how things worked around here, to really leverage that. The new open checkbook actually provides a lot of visualization and graphing tools in there, that I think make it easier to understand how we spend our money, and certainly provide the detail that I think all different extremes are looking for. With that said, if there's any specific questions.
So, what is the permitting system gonna allow us to do that we can't do now?
In terms of, I think probably the biggest change in it is mobility. So, we have a number of departments now that are, you know, certainly doing more and more online, and more and more in the field. So, the ability for the application to be able to handle that, that's one side of it. The other side of it is to be able to get data out of it, and to be able to present data, and again, going back to, you know, providing this information to the public, to be able to use that data, you know, hopefully have better balanced scorecards and metrics reporting, things like that. It's a web-based application, so it's a heck of a lot easier to maintain on our end, and it provides a lot more flexibility to add features going down the line.
Yeah, well, I wanted to ask you about the telecom, because that was another area where you were going down. Is that, again, you bought new equipment, and?
Yeah, our telecom services are constantly, I think, going in the, in one direction, which is down. So, as we consolidate our infrastructure, and we collapse a lot of what we're doing, telecom is absolutely going to continue to be, I think, leveraged in terms of cost savings. I don't know how far we can get it down, but, you know, obviously in an organization of this size, the more we leverage the environment that we have, the less, external lines we have, the less separate anything in terms of infrastructure. So, we're able to remove a lot of the redundant legacy type of connections.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask about, because I always notice on your performance workload stuff, if you have more than you anticipated, and it was departmental applications maintained? Your actuals in 2016 were 19, and you'd only anticipated 13. What are those, and why were there more?
Well, I think, and, you know, from our standpoint, as we continue to, again, the landscape shifts, so some applications move to the cloud, some get brought in-house. So, as we're either bringing new applications on, online, or we're actually moving some out to the cloud, you see somewhat of a general shift in that. Applications are big and small, so that number is, is indicative of a lot of different types of applications. We say departmental, it's generally something that's very specific to maybe one or two departments versus enterprise, which is largely the whole organization using it. So, an enterprise application would be our payroll system, for instance.
Okay.
Sleckman Franco.
So, I have two questions. One, just returning back to the, the new permitting system. One of the trends, I think, in surrounding municipalities is towards posting some information around results of permit inspections, so health, health department inspections of restaurants, for example. We have a, I think, the capability to do that on our website right now. My impression is for a variety of different reasons, one of which being the permitting system, we just haven't done that. So, I'm wondering if this new permitting system is gonna ease that, that posting of information, so we can, in your words, get some more information out to the public?
Yeah, most definitely. And, and just to backtrack a little bit, as we were really looking to add some additional information online last year, we really kinda ran into a little bit of a roadblock with the existing system, in terms of how much effort and energy do we want to put into that, knowing that we're really replacing it in six months. The new system gives us the ability to, I think, make the information a lot more easily displayed. It also has better search capability, and, and quite frankly, you don't want to put every bit of information out there, there is some information you want to call back. So, we have the ability, I think, manage what we, what is displayed better and more efficiently.
Great. And then my second question is more generally about data. So, you have done an excellent job about posting data sets on, on the website, dated@brooklineMA.gov. Where we seem to be lacking is, is providing some tools for analysis of that data. The collection of data in and of itself is not the goal, it's to use that data to make decisions and to spot trends, and figure out what we should be doing, not only today, but five or 10 years in the future. I'm wondering what you're thinking, not necessarily in this fiscal year, but long-term, is about either, in both, providing some rudimentary, basic-level data analysis tools on the website, so you can create some charts and graphs and-
Sure.
-compare maybe some disparate information. But then, where are we internally, as an organization, about providing our departments with the ability to do data visualization, or look at trends over the long term? Not only within neatly defined data sets, but to try and link a bunch of different data sets together, to try and get a comprehensive picture?
Well, first, thank you for noticing that we have the open data there. That makes me feel good. We've gone in, you know, we spent a lot of time and energy to make that data available, so that I, hopefully get to all pieces of your question there. But I think there's three primary areas where we're focusing in terms of, you know, making data available. Our, what we've done over the last couple of years is we've made our, what we call open data available, and those are just general data sets that we have, that we sort of provide to the world, both researchers, developers, certainly interested parties. You know, there is an assumption there that you have some probably advanced skills, I would say, in terms of working with that data. But generally, data aggregators, if you were researchers, will take that, and they'll know what to do with it. So, to a layperson, it, it may be a bit much. So, as you move beyond that, the, the other piece was, as I alluded to, or mentioned before, was the open checkbook provides a lot of financial data, and data essentially to how our daily- the open checkbook provides a lot of financial data and data essentially to how our daily operations, where we spend money. And we have tried to provide two avenues there, both check-level data, Munis-level data, but also data visualization. So, very easily look at pie graphs and charts and things like that and kind of figure out where trends are going and all, and things of that nature. The third piece, which is probably more of the long-term strategy, is around, we have all this data now. We also have, you know, a couple of new applications coming online, which are really going to give our departments the ability to take a look at this data, be able to, you know, both benchmark themselves, be able to, you know, create their own performance measures, but also share those with the public. And I think that that's, you know, an evolution. We'll get there. It's going to take time, and we're also going to have to do that incrementally so that we're providing good and meaningful data. And I think that it's probably a global challenge, certainly not, you know, defined or confined here to Brookline. We're all trying to figure out what's the right data that we want to be able to measure, and how do we present that data so that it makes sense to folks? But we also, you know, provide the appropriate level of information, that it's not too much and it's not too little. So, I think you'll see sort of some iterations of that, you know, going forward. I don't think, did I get all of that?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Stokes?
I would just mention that as part of this whole transparency effort and to try to make better decisions for the town, we've been engaged in this survey. It's called the National Citizen Survey. This is our second time we've done it. We don't have time to present any results, but Kevin and I would like to get some time on the board's calendar in the future and talk about some of those, the second round of results from that survey.
Yes, thank you.
Should be an interesting discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next up is the Finance Department, which is a compendium of a number of subprograms. So, Mr. Basen, Mr. DePietro?
Good evening. Michael DePietro, Town Comptroller. On behalf of the Finance Department, we're requesting $3.2 million, or approximately 1.4% increase. And as you're well aware, that the Finance Department is made up of four divisions, Comptroller, Assessing, Purchasing, and Treasury Division, as well as, as you know, currently, we do not have a Finance Director overseeing the four divisions currently, but each of the other division heads are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Just as an overall, a big picture, budget, again, is, request is up about $45,000, primarily changes in steps for personnel. Two main areas on the non-expense side are related to software support for Munis, which is our financial software, as well as an increase in the credit card fees related in the Treasury Division. But again, with that, certainly all the division heads are here tonight for any questions that you may have.
I guess, one question I always have is about the credit card processing and what's, I know before Mr. Cronin left, he was working on ways to bring that down and also consolidate some of our systems so that you can have a more of a unified account. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, absolutely. Well, as usage increases, fees directly relate to the increase of use. One thing that we are looking at over the upcoming year is to see exactly what we can consolidate. We have made some consolidations over the years, but that's always something that we're constantly looking at. In addition, it's the upcoming season, year goes on, and once we do have a Finance Director in place, we are going to be looking at to see potentially, should the town continue to absorb those fees and potentially, as you all have made different purchases at different organizations, sometimes they're levied an additional fee. So, if you have a service that you're paying $100 for, then you might pay a convenience fee of 50 cents or a dollar or a percentage. Currently, right now, the town absorbs most of that cost, but that's something that we want to take a look at next year.
I would say that we're pretty much at the position where we believe we should be recovering some of those expenses from users. We do it now to some extent, but not to the level that, you know, we've talked about. I know the overall study committee was focused on that. So, I'm not, I'm pretty convinced that we need to do it, but in order to implement it, we are waiting for our new Finance Director. I should take the opportunity to remind the board that we are very actively looking for a Finance Director. This is the second round of the process. Our first round, we had some good candidates. We didn't think we had a pool that was broad enough for a position of this nature, so we decided to go out again, and now we're right in the middle of that second process. And we have achieved a more diverse and larger pool, and I'm quite confident that will result with a Finance Director on this round.
Yes, since I won't be around too much longer, I just want to go on record as saying, I think, when I see 27,000, almost $28,000, that we should be recovering that cost, at least part of it, from users. I don't think, if people want the convenience of paying by credit card or what have you online, that they mind paying a slight extra fee to cover that cost. So, you know, I think, if I'm correct, when I look at the numbers, I believe those kinds of transactions have gone up dramatically.
They sure have.
And so, you know, I think, I think people are used to the system now, and it's time to start recovering those costs.
Are they all set by cost of, the cost of paper transactions?
No, I don't believe so, but.
So, one note on that, you hadn't mentioned 28,000. That's the year-over-year delta we're looking at, actually closer to three, over 300,000 in credit card transactions. It's a serious, serious factor within the department, and originally, a lot of municipalities took on the cost because it was trying to encourage the convenience of the credit card transaction. You can stay at home. We want to encourage people to do that because it's less people on foot coming to the door and engaging with our staff. Now, that that has come to almost a tipping point, we've reached the point that it's not necessarily, an argument could be made, it's not necessarily fair to have all taxpayers paying for the convenience of a select few using credit cards. So, that's the type of policy decision that we'll have to go into it, but we are, right now, talking to different backend processing systems and ways that we could ease transactions for consumers through potentially kiosks in different locations so that even when Town Hall would be closed, there would potentially be places that even if a person doesn't have a computer at home to engage with the town, they could come to either a library or the lobby of Town Hall and be able to engage and do their business at a kiosk. So, there's a bunch of different ways that we can kind of modernize this, but it, there is a real discussion to be had because it is hundreds of thousands of dollars now that we're just paying to process.
Now that I'm hearing the real figures, I'm going to say we need to move very expeditiously.
Sleckman Green.
Yeah, I think, as a general principle, we should move expeditiously. But I think it's also important to know what costs we're saving by not having paper transactions or people coming to the window and doing their business. I mean, that's, that's a pretty expensive process itself, so.
So, that's one thing.
I mean, it's just, I'm not, you know, asking for an answer, I just think that at some point, we need to calculate that.
So, it is a thing that we're actually looking at right now. The IT Department is trying to encompass all of the e-commerce. What's, the difficult thing right now for us to do is to delineate if someone uses a credit card in-line at the counter versus online versus using a credit card at a meter. We're going to introduce pay-by-cell technology soon. So, what happened is, we have a bunch of different companies providing a similar service with credit card transactions, and we're having difficulty sifting through all of them. With bringing on potentially one company or a couple of companies to process all credit card transactions, we can then do a better job of delineating what types they are based on where the transaction is made, whether it be online, in-line, types of things. So, Ben in the IT Department has been working very hard. They were just here going over PCI compliance for credit card transactions at the counters around Town Hall today. So, it is, it's like currently being worked on and pretty teed up for an eventual Finance Director to kind of run with it when there's the opportunity.
Sleckman Heller.
As a user of the system myself, I want to toot its convenience factor because I get the bill, I walk to my computer, I open it up, I pay the bill, you can schedule it, it doesn't have to go out that day, so you can manage your cash flow.
So, which bill are you talking about?
Water, trash, water and sewer, trash, excise tax, all those four, I know I pay online.
Yep.
And, you know, it saves me the cost of a stamp or, you know, driving to Town Hall to come in the daylight hours, and you have them here at night, and, you know, the office isn't open, so, you know, that's, the stamp is 50 cents.
Sure.
So, it's definitely, I think, something to explore. I mean, I guess there are many other fees there. You already charge a convenience fee for real estate tax, is that correct?
Yes, because, that's because of the size of that, yeah.
Pardon?
It's because of the size of the transaction.
Right.
When, when you have a, like, meter transaction, it's 30-something cents per transaction type of thing to process the payment. When you get into the thousands of dollars, it's a 3%, 5% fee on those, so it becomes exorbitant, so we have to pass on with that along.
Yeah, though, you can pay online through the, an electronic check, and it's only 40 cents, so it's less than the cost of a stamp, is what I do, just to save the trip to Town Hall.
Right.
I'd like to invite Mr. Janikakis or, and/or Mr. McCabe, tell us about your divisions.
It's David Janikakis, Chief Procurement Officer. Seems like I was here just yesterday for this current fiscal year for fuel prices. We did do bids for FY18. As expected, the prices were not as low as we're currently paying, but we are in line with the market prices. We're paying $1.85 for heating fuel, 207 for gasoline, and 213 for diesel for FY18. So, it's, all of the folks, the same cooperative that we've had before, the 11 cities and towns here in the Boston area, we felt pretty satisfied with the prices we get. There are some indications, unfortunately, that the market's going to go up, although it's taken a dip recently. That's when we did the bids, and so, that's usually a good sign for us, I don't know, for the consumer long-term, but we'll have to see what happens. But that's, you know, I like to report every year what we've done because it does affect our budget and it affects, so obviously, the other members of the cooperative here in the area.
Now, I noticed we're paying this fiscal year, what, $1.63?
For gasoline, and we're actually paying $1.32 for heating fuel, which a lot of the other cities, Newton and Cambridge, are really happy with that, and diesel is in the 1.55 range. So, this year was probably the best year we've had in many, many years. We took advantage a year ago or so of the dip that happened in the winter of the early part of 2016. So, we're hoping that, I don't think prices are going to go that low at any point in the near future, so we moved on what we saw as far as the, good for the next fiscal year period.
Sleckman Daley.
Yeah, I just want to ask you, David, I think you handle insurance
Yes, I do, yeah.
for our buildings. And to remind me, to what extent are we self-insured?
We have property insurance for all of the town-owned buildings, but all of liability is self-insured. If someone were to slip or fall, they would have to file a claim with the legal department. But basically, we're allowed by state law to be self-insured to, for liability-type claims. But, for example, if a, if something happened within a building as far as damage, and we had, a couple of years ago, in the winter there, we had water damage in about 35 buildings. Aggregate, we were able to have a settlement for the various damages, walls, roofs, window leakage, all that. That's part of the property policy, similar to a lot of us have at home. The liability is self-insured, and that'd be something folks would have to handle with the, with the legal department. We also are self-insured for vehicles.
Is there a cap on that liability?
There's not, no. Although, yes, there is a state cap, correct. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
Municipal.
Yeah. The municipal, I believe it's $100,000, if I remember correctly. That's, that's, the Law Department and others have reminded me that the, that cap has been challenged, but it, so far, it's held up in court. And so, we have that, that 100 grand liability cap, so that's one of the other benefits of being self-insured for that. But our, just to add, the, we do also have the 10 or so buildings that the town owns, we do have property coverage for those, and the vehicles are not covered by typical auto insurance policies. If a vehicle is parked in a town garage or a town lot, DPW under this building, they are then covered, but on the road, we're also self-insured. If one of the town vehicles, the only vehicles that do have coverage for on the road are the fire trucks because of their very extensive cost. So, we do have those covered under an additional policy for the, I think it's 12 vehicles that we have under the Fire Department, the large red truck, so to speak.
So, this town is talking about expansion of our schools, talking about a ninth elementary school, talking about high school addition. I'm wondering what impact that has on your world. Clearly, if we build a new building, we're going to have to put something in it, and I imagine that flows through your shop.
It does. In fact, on both ends of the furniture fixtures and equipment, we're already working with the Building Department and the School Department for the Devotion School. We've already had meetings for both the actual chairs and the, all the various desks and other equipment, the IT functions, all the various computers, projectors, whiteboards, all the things you can imagine. This is a pretty significant project, as, almost as big, if not as big, as the high school project in the 90s. So, that's a process that we're literally, have started already with Tony Gugli and the School Department's assistants. We're going to be working from now until next July and August to make sure that, one, the vendors are supplying these. We also are making sure that we have, we have specific budget line items in the project, in the Devotion project, and so those are going to be met. For the other projects, we assume we're going to be handling them the same way as the projects approved and then the budgets are approved, working with the architects, and we, we're using Massachusetts State contracts as well as other purchasing vehicles to get the best deals, so to speak, on every little chair. And of course, MSBA, when it's a funded project like Devotion, they want to see everything. Doesn't make a difference if we don't fund through them for the other school projects, we're going to still be holding ourselves to the same kind of requirements. So, it's a, it's worked successfully, the process, we've worked with building and schools for as long as I've been here, going back to the early 2000s, to, as a group, working with various companies to make sure that the projects are well-managed. We don't want to open a school that doesn't have the proper equipment, obviously. So, we hold our vendors to a pretty high standard, and as long as they perform, we'll do business with them, you know, that type of thing. On insurance, just as an aside, in about a year and a half, we're going to have a pretty decent bump up in our insurance premium. We're going from an approximately $30 million building in the old Devotion to 100-odd million dollars. So, we're going to see that, and every time we add a billion, a million, a few million dollars, we're going to be looking at, we're at about a half a billion dollars in insurance value as we add these larger buildings. That's going to have an effect on the premium. But, you know, we've, the market has been pretty good on insurance. We've only had increases based on the value of the contents. Now, we're going to be actually increasing the value of the building, so we'll see some price increases. But I think we've had some pretty aggressive quotes on insurance over the years.
Okay. Mr. McCabe, what's going on in your world?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gary McCabe, the Chief Assessor. Thank you for, you know, opportunity to present our budget, effectively a maintenance budget, I'll call it, with a net increase anticipated of $900 on $690,000. So, we're pleased to present that, including no personnel changes and, you know, very little else in terms of budget number changes. Our focus of our department continues to be one of the biggest databases in town, and I've presented arguments that it's one of the biggest assets in town. There's a, I know the administration is looking at a creation of a, sort of a fixed asset record, and I've asked that our assessor's database be included as an intangible asset in that asset record, and I've suggested it would cost us $3.5 million to replace it from scratch. So, you know, we view it that way, as a, you know, valuable asset that the town needs to assess its property and also for others to use for analysis and comparison. So, that, you know, that continues to be our focus. We also focus on tax-based growth from new construction and changes in use and that sort of thing. And that, as we all know, that activity's, you know, strong as well, so. activity's, you know, strong as well. So significant other activity in the department due to the Municipal Modernization Act. One of the changes made in that is that our three-year certification audit by the State Department of Revenue has been pushed out from fiscal year '18, in our case, to fiscal year '19. So we won't have to spend the resources to defend our assessments and our assessment process in fiscal year '18. So we've shifted our focus a little bit within the department, and we're going to spend that time improving our process instead of defending our process to the state auditors. And, you know, we're excited about that, just making our models better statistically and more robust, as well as our data, broadening our database as well as maintaining it, and looking at more ways to get information online and moving information out to the public online and bringing information in online. So, you know, we think we'll have enough to do in fiscal year '18, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Slukman-Daly.
Yeah, I have a question, so, which kind of pertains to what you were just talking about, I believe. But how close are our assessed values to fair market value?
Overall, they're relatively close, within 10%. The two things to keep in mind, the assessment date for fiscal year, our current fiscal year, '17, here we are, March of '17, was January 1st of 2016, right? So the assessment date always precedes the beginning of the fiscal year by law by six months. And the actual, in the quarterly billing system we have, actual bills go out a year afterwards. So you have to put that, I guess it's relative, Slukman-Daly, you have to put that in perspective. They'll get a current sale price and compare it to a January 1st, 2016 assessment. It's not going to be as close as, you know, a March 2016 sale price was, right? So that's, I think when you, you know, you put them in the right timeframe, they measure very well. What's been happening lately, I will add to that comment, is with the interest in redeveloping certain properties in Brookline, what we've seen is, so this potential value component in sale prices, and I know we've talked about this a little bit at the December classification hearing. Traditionally, we'll look at the value of property as it is, in our case, January 1st, 2016. And what was there January 1st, 2016? Was it a hotel? Was it a grocery store? You know, whatever it was, that's what we looked at and tried to consider whether there was a likelihood of, you know, additions being put on or redevelopment. And, you know, in certain markets, most markets, I would argue, that's relatively easy to do. Look at it and say, you know, there's an extra lot that could be sold off, that sort of thing. But in the current market, it's harder to do, and I'll admit that, to envision sort of the redevelopment of a property while you're assessing it at the same time, knowing that, you know, there's a lot of approvals that would have to be made in order to redevelop, and it could take a long time. But I do see that some of the larger sale prices, and I'm sure you've seen them as well, seem to reflect this potential for redevelopment of the property. So, you know, that's harder to put into a sort of a statistical analysis, say, how are we doing against that? And it tends to be the larger properties, and the more we learn about the prospective use, the more we can, you know, understand how to value that property. So, you know, there's the large, complex properties, I think, fit in a different category, if I can put it that way.
Okay.
Slukman-Frankel. I don't want to go down too much of a rabbit hole here, but I think it's news to nobody that we've got a lot of 40B projects in Brookline. And one of the issues that I believe Slukman-Green brought up around the planned or the proposed development at the Waldorf Garden Garage was that some of the market rate units may have an impact on the rent rolls in the surrounding neighborhood. So if you've got a penthouse that's on the market for $14,000, well, it makes the apartment building next door that much more valuable because you're gentrifying, for lack of a better term, the neighborhood. I'm wondering how that factors into the assessment of property that may be rented out or may be owner-occupied.
I think that's a very good question, as always, Slukman-Frankel. So the, what influences value are a number of things, not just one, maybe as many as 20 or 30 different factors at any time could influence value. And certainly, redevelopment of a particular site could impact the neighborhood, immediate or greater neighborhood. And that's true in even single-family home neighborhoods or condominium neighborhoods. So there will be some influence there, although, you know, we have some very strong markets already, and this would take us perhaps to another level. But we also see, so I would say, yes, there could be some dragging up sort of the rising tide type of issue, but I would also worry about the basics of supply and demand. And that's, you know, you bring in a number of other units, a large number of units, will there be demand for all those units? And will they get the 1,400, not only in that property, but, you know, will it rise next door? And sometimes, you know, I'm not an economist, although we have the benefit of an economist on our board, you know, it's somewhat of a forecast. And the assessment year after year allows us to get closer as we go forward. We don't have to assess now for five years out. We assess now for one year, then we assess again for one year. So those are very hard things to predict what'll happen. Just a quick other story. A number of years ago, there was some concern, this sort of the larger economics that affect local values, some concern that the federal government may stop subsidizing teaching hospitals. And I know former finance director Cirillo, and I looked very hard at that. If that, for example, were ever to happen, and there were less interns at our teaching hospitals in the Longwood Medical Area, I think that would affect the rents that are paid for apartments in Brookline. So, you know, there are a number of things that could happen, both from the outside and the inside.
Okay, I think we need to move on. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
And we'll be voting another night on this. Thank you. I think the last budget we're going to talk about tonight is recreation. We're going to defer the selectment and the unclassified, I think. So hopefully in 20 minutes or less.
I'm going to be 20 minutes or less? Absolutely. I take that challenge. Thank you. It's hard to follow up after Mr. McCabe, though.
Right.
He's pretty awesome.
So now, this is the recreation department?
This is, thank you. Lisa Paradas, Recreation Director. I'm here to present the recreation budget for FY '18. I will give you some numbers first, and then I'll be happy to present some highlights from the recreation department, and I'll take questions. As you know, the recreation budget is separated into three different funds. The first one is the general fund or the tax-based fund, and that, this year, is a total of $1,208,000, which is a total increase of $10,444. That is made up of personnel increases in the amount of about $23,000, but also balanced by a decrease in utilities of a little over $13,000. Our second fund is the revolving fund, and that, that balance, that fund is totaling $3,108,526, which results in a total increase of $118,368. That is made up of $71,000 in personnel, which is broken down into $64,000 in park ranger salary and the rest in part-time, and then $17,000 and change in services, supplies in the amount of about $9,000, and other charges of about $19,000 for coach training and other dues. Intergovernmental and decreased utilities amounted to the rest. At this point, I also wanted to point out that our financial aid to families this year was, has risen to $129,000 annually, as last year it was hovering right around $100,000, and that our cost recovery has risen to 78.9%, up from 77.5 in the previous fiscal year. Last fund that I'm here to speak about is the Golf Enterprise Fund, and this year, the balance will be $1,647,098, and that represents a total increase of about $124,000, made up of $86,000 in personnel, part-time and full-time salary, and collective bargaining contributes to that as well. Services in the amount of about $11,000, and supplies increased over $90,000. Increased utilities by about $10,000, and we had a decrease in debt service of about $75,000, and an intergovernmental decrease of about $2,000. At this time, I just, it's a nice thing to be able to come here each year, to be able to speak about some of the highlights from the different divisions of our department. And I wanted to just talk about some of the things that happened this year. First, the Driving Range opened August 1st of 2016 to some fanfare and great pride. It was a great project. We opened it on a little bit behind schedule, but we were very happy to have that open August 1st. We also saw player programs increase at about 30% this year in the last part of the golf season. So we're very happy about that. We were able to do some much-needed improvements to the bunkers, and we hope from the added value and the revenue from the Driving Range, we'll continue to do that on the course. This year, I also wanted to point out that we did, we did complete a crowdfunding grant that was allowed to us through the National Recreation and Park Association, the amount of $21,000, which will help us out in our capital project at the pool and provide some much-needed access to family-changing areas. There will also be gender fluid-changing areas. I can't leave this budget today without talking about some of the great things that have happened with my staff over this past year. Our therapeutic recreation person, staff person was, is going to be the national representative for rec therapists, which is a phenomenal thing. She's a wonderful person, direct from Texas. And I can't, I would be remiss if I didn't speak about Melissa Batid. I was not here the night that we came for the authorization to hire, but 24 years of her service, I miss her greatly. We also have over 200 applicants for the position, so they clearly don't know who they're going to be working for. No, kidding. But I'm excited. The actual posting doesn't close until Friday, so there could be over 200 applicants by that point. So, and we also, because, and I heard a couple of the other department heads here tonight talk about data management, and we have lots of data in the recreation department, and it's about telling our story the right way. And we decided last year that we needed to do that, and what we did was transition one of our management positions into a performance analyst and resource manager, and we're really finding great results from that. We need some more data. We have a lot of data to collect, and we're just, we're working with the IT department and some other places to really present that story well and to tell a story of social service that really means something to the community and to talk about impact, because that's what we do. It's not just about the bottom line, but it's about impact. And speaking of impact, we, with our $27,000 grant from the NRPA, which is the National Rec and Park Association, and Walmart, we have been able to really enjoy some success with our health and wellness initiatives and nutritional classes and healthy eating initiatives over the course of after-school time, out-of-school time, which is comprised of our after-school programs as well as our summer programs. Our social media and marketing efforts have tripled this year, and results have tripled this year. And our, of course, I could not leave you tonight without talking about our fifth annual Brookline Day celebration, which again was a sunny day, and I'll continue to knock on wood about that. It was a beautiful day, and we had a great, I think, pretty much everybody was there, so you all know what a great, fabulous program it was. Summer concert series, again, too, a great thing. We're in the middle of a capital project at the pool, and so for those of you who are seeing this on TV, there will be some shutdown in April of the pool, and we're really looking forward to that. So with that, I will take any questions you would like.
Okay. Slukman-Daly.
Yeah, one thing I was looking for in your, I think you're, speaking of telling your story, I think you're doing yourself a little disservice, because in the performance workload indicators, I was looking for how many programs you're running and how they're broken, team sports programs, classes, and how they're broken down between children and adults. And I couldn't find it in there. So maybe you can send us along a memo, but I'd suggest that you'd want to put it in your performance workload indicators.
Yeah, I will have to speak to that, too, and I would be more than happy to do that. Austin and Melissa and I have talked at length about reporting on numbers and just how those numbers translate.
Well, the thing is, when we look at the budget number, it's like, okay, so what are we getting for that amount of money?
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's, I would certainly be interested.
Will do.
So you talked a little bit about the addition of the Driving Range. It looks like there's one other large change to the golf course through the Golf Enterprise Fund. It looks like you're adding a position.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you can just talk a little bit about what that position's going to be charged with.
Yeah. So that actually, that position is an assistant professional position. It's a position that we, that we eliminated five years ago from the golf course in order to sort of gain some ground and try to, you know, work on the budget piece of the golf course. Now that we have the Driving Range open and we have a lot more people who are accessing the golf course, we see the need for this, and we know that we can support that position as well. So that's what that position is for.
I see you don't have any equipment requests listed here. Am I missing something?
I do not.
And I was wondering, and maybe other departments are doing this, my favorite topic, water trucks. I know that we've leased water trucks, for example, at Brookline Day and other events. I was wondering if you have any thoughts of acquiring this type of equipment so that, you know, they're available in the hot summer days coming up when people are not supposed to use bottled water, but still are thirsty.
Yeah. Actually, I've had that conversation, just ancillary conversations with Commissioner Papasturgen. So that's something that I think may fall under their budget, or, we've talked about that. But yes, I haven't spoken, I haven't included that in my, in my particular budget, probably mostly because we have Brookline Day covered. Our summer concerts would be the one place that I would see a real need for that as well. But you bring up a good point. It's something I should probably pursue with the commissioner. Thank you.
Although, if you have working times in most of the parks, you don't need it, right?
Yeah, that assumes you have working times in most of the parks.
Any other questions, comments?
Did I do well?
You did.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay. You know what? I already said we would defer the Board of Selectment and unclassified budgets. Why don't we take a seven-minute break, and we'll come back. We'll start right at 8:00 with the Immigration and Custom Enforcement Detainer Public Hearing. I'll just say, anyone who wishes to speak, there is a sign-up sheet. Where is it out? There's one out, out in the lobby, so sign up. It'll generally be a three-minute limit. It'll generally be a three-minute limit. Well, I promised the first speaker five, because she's done a lot of work on the petition. You're, that's.
I'm the head of the class. I signed up yesterday by email.
Yeah, there's a pretty full room, so I'll give you four. You know, we have to be fair to everyone else. And you've already had an opportunity within the working group.
Yes, but that's, this is, you know, I didn't see the proposal until after the working group.
But our proposal isn't, there's only one change.
No, no, we found, anyway, I'll get to that. I wasn't able to get the last meeting of the work, of the work. So that's, I had a procedure, and I just.
Well, be succinct.
I'll try to be succinct. Succinct.
Okay.
Is this what was at our places tonight different than the one we got in our packet?
One word. It's a general order three-point-oh instead of three-point-one.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, nine, ten. Who's the chief there?
He's on the left side.
Oh, yeah. Because I'm going to ask him to say something. Okay, let's get started. We've been looking at our policies regarding immigration and refugees and our relationship with Immigration and Customs Enforcement now, I guess for a few months. And I think the first time we talked about this was before the inauguration of the current president, whose name I won't mention. And out of that discussion came a statement that we issued at the beginning of February, which says, I'll summarize it, that we believe the actions of the presidents, whose name I won't mention, in targeting and denigrating immigrants and refugees has created an atmosphere of fear and hatred in the country and potentially in Brookline. We also believe that an attack on one group will lead to attacks on other groups, and I guess we've unfortunately seen some of that happening, as the increased incidence of anti-Semitic attacks in Massachusetts illustrates, and that attacks on immigrants, refugees, and other groups must be resisted and combated by all legal means. And back in two thousand, back in nineteen-eighty-five and two thousand and five, town meeting voted, in a different context, but voted nonetheless, to declare ourselves a sanctuary town, though the context of those votes was a little different, especially the nineteen-eighty-five vote. The nineteen-eighty-five vote was very specific, focusing on Central America. We also, in our statement, stated some policy statements on behalf of the town, so that, most importantly, that town services and resources will be made available irrespective of anyone's legal status, and no actions against any person within the town shall be based solely on that person's status as an immigrant or refugee. And no town employee shall ask for information on immigration status of any person unless reasonably necessary for the provision of services by town employees. And I would imagine that would be very rare indeed. We directed Town Council to work with other towns and cities as appropriate to protect our funding sources from the federal government, and we also requested that what we call Brookline Civil Society, including houses of worship, service organizations, political entities, nonprofits, educational institutions, and individuals learn about and provide support, welcome, safe haven, and sanctuary, and to help integrate into the fabric of our community, all resident and visiting immigrants irrespective of their legal status. Lastly, we asked our Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations to look at police department policies in this area, and that's why we're here tonight. Last week, we were presented with a proposal from the Commission. It was an hour-long presentation which provided a lot of information about how the Commission came to the recommendations that they came to. And in doing so, they looked at other communities, they had discussions amongst themselves in open meetings. I understand a lot of people observed and participated. But before we implement any policies, big policies, for our police department, I think it's appropriate and in accordance with our policy that we hold a public hearing and hear from the public what the public thinks about the proposed policy changes. The proposed policy has been posted on our website now for about a week, and I hope those of you who are in the room and wish to speak and others have read it and have formed an opinion, and I'll be, I and the rest of the board will be happy to hear it. But I'll summarize it especially for those watching on TV. So first, there's a special order that was issued in two thousand and twelve, which governs how the police department handles ICE detainer orders, detainment orders, detainee orders.
Detainer.
Detainer orders.
Requests.
Detainer requests. It's not, they're not orders, they're requests. To the extent that it's still in effect, and it hasn't been followed in a while, is hereby rescinded, and that's part one of the proposed policy. Part two is actually something that didn't come out of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission, but was added, given something that we saw in the Homeland Security memo implementing some of the more recent policies, inviting local governments to participate and enter into memorandums of understanding with the Immigration, with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, to deputize local law enforcement as immigration officers. And part two of this policy explicitly declines that ICE offer from ICE to become one of them. And then part three is changes in the general orders of the police department, the most salient of the general orders to be changed. So first, that all persons arrested shall be informed that if they are a foreign national, they have the right to request that the department contact their consulate. No person arrested shall be asked their immigration status unless the question pertains to a criminal investigation, and that person has been read their Miranda rights. Two, no person shall be held in custody by the department based on the existence of an ICE detainer. The department shall adhere to existing general orders pertaining to the arrests of persons. Three, any person arrested by the police department shall be booked in accordance with pre-existing policy. And then if, after transmitting an arrestee's fingerprints to the Massachusetts State Police, they then send the fingerprints to the FBI, and then the FBI distributes those fingerprints within the federal establishment, including ICE, if a detainer comes back, the arrestee shall be made aware of the detainer and provided a copy. And the arrestee shall also be made aware that the police department will not hold them in custody on the ICE detainer if they post bail or are released on their own recognizance. Four, while the department is prohibited from detaining persons on ICE detainers, it is not prohibited from detaining an arrestee regardless of their immigration status for any lawful reason such as an arrest warrant. So if a person is going to be, can be held irrespective of their status, their immigration status, they can continue to be held. Then the policy asks, has the police department systematically keeping track of these detainers? And then there's a paragraph that was explained to us that I suspect is going to be the subject of a lot of comments here tonight, and I'll read it. The department, though required not to do so, though not required to do so, is not prohibited or restricted from sending to or receiving from ICE information regarding the citizenship or immigration status, documented or undocumented of any person, as required by law. And the purpose of this, and someone from the board or the chief can, if I get it wrong, can explain a little better than me, is that we, as a government, we need to comply with the law. And it's not our intent to go out of our way to cooperate with ICE, but there might be times where we might want to for various reasons, such as if someone is a violent offender, and Mr. Naro had a couple of examples. There was a human trafficking ring where, you know, ICE had an arrest warrant, and so we were able to communicate with ICE in a situation like that. And then the department shall provide a copy of the general order to the officers, so the officers, and provide training so that this policy can be implemented. So that's kind of a summary. Slukman-Green.
Oh, no.
Yeah, okay.
I'd just like to add that the provision that Slukman-Wyszynski spoke about regarding not prohibiting anyone in the town from communicating with ICE is very important. We are a town, and we have to follow the law. But at the same time, you should be aware that a police officer cannot violate our current policies with respect to arrest, which requires that the arrestee be afforded all their constitutional rights, including right to only be detained on probable cause. So I think, you know, it's important that, you know, although, you know, we are not prohibiting anyone from talking to ICE, we have procedures in place to prevent an abuse of that. I'd also like to add that, you know, Frank Farlow, who recently passed away, really is. the person who should be given credit for, you know, this process. Back last year, he began discussions with the Commission and with the police chief regarding, you know, how to respond to some of the crazy things coming out of the administration in Washington. And, you know, that process was derailed when he passed away, but, you know, it quickly got back on track, and I think the result of that is this proposed policy, which I think is an excellent memorial to Frank, and, you know, something that we can be very proud of and will be seen throughout, you know, this area, maybe even the country, as sort of cutting-edge response to, response by municipalities to some of the things that are being proposed by the administration with respect to immigrants and refugees.
Okay, yes.
So I was just going to say that this policy that's before the board tonight and that we're going to hear comments about only pertains to post-arrest procedure. I believe that the Commission is currently looking at other policies that apply pre-arrest into witnesses and victims, and I expect that there'll be similar policy changes, if appropriate, coming before this board. So this is the first step of a multi-step process.
Right, and we already have put a policy in place from the more general statement that town employees will not ask about the immigration status of any person unless reasonably necessary. So I think that umbrella kind of over, is over this policy. I'd like to invite the chief to say a few words.
Good evening. I'd like to go a little bit about, a little bit back in time, what got us to put together that special order. Then I'll go give a little bit about the status of ICE detainers that we were made aware of with people that we had under arrest for charges unrelated to the detainer, and then a little bit about the current status. So it'll take a couple of minutes, but I hope you'll be with me. The Secure Communities Program was established in 2008 by the Department of Homeland Security. According to the Department of Homeland Security, that program was intended to more effectively identify and facilitate the removal of criminal aliens in the custody of state and local law enforcement agencies. Under the Department of Homeland Security is their wing, which is the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, which is ICE. However, they are just one part of the Department of Homeland Security. In 2010, the Department of Homeland Security published the agency's enforcement priorities under the Secure Communities Program, which were intended to ensure that the agency's resources were dedicated to individuals whose removal promotes public safety, national security, border security, and the integrity of the immigration system. Now with that backdrop, we had attended meetings, I had attended meetings, and the program was explained to us with the goal to get people that were committing serious crimes in the country out of the country, so they didn't prey upon our residents and our citizens. With that, when they came out with the Secure Communities Program, we took a look at how we handled detainers that came our way. We had no rules written, we had no policy written, and to be honest with you, they're probably few and far between, because the only way we would find out prior to the Secure Communities was to make a call to ICE. And we never tracked how many, if at all, that was made. So we took the procedures that we had followed with a warrant, and we put it into a special order, and the special order actually was intended to memorialize in writing the procedures that we had been following unwritten with persons that were under arrest on Brookline charges, and we somehow found out that a detainer was lodged against them. The special order also standardized the steps that we take when dealing with detainers and minimized the interaction between our offices and ICE personnel. And the reason, one of the big reasons that that was minimized is because all of the notifications were supposed to be coming from ICE based on a fingerprint check, of which you explain how it works. So that would eliminate the need for a lot of the phone calls that were originating out of the department towards ICE. Furthermore, it also gave direction to our commanding officers, when a fingerprint check of an arrested person revealed that a detainer was in effect, or possibly in effect, how they go about confirming that. So it was our belief that the order was necessary to put in place to make sure that people were accountable, to make sure we were handling things in the proper way, and make sure that we were making IDs based on a more accurate identification process. And I think that special order did serve those purposes. However, because of the backlash that President Obama and Homeland Security were getting across the country, Secure Communities went out of sight in November of 2014, and it was replaced with a priority enforcement program called PEP. Again, that PEP program came under the Department of Homeland Security. That program directed ICE personnel to prioritize transfers based on a person's conviction of certain serious criminal offenses and to replace requests for detention with requests for ICE notification only. With that as their charge, it was felt that ICE responses from fingerprint submissions would go down, and in fact, they have. I'll get to it in a minute, but since the inception of PEP, we have not had any fingerprint-based identifications of people wanted on ICE detainers. So that brings us to what's been going on in the country over the past several months, and I think I said here last week that we fully understand the era that we're in, I think, but we know that it's a different atmosphere than it was four years ago. So a week ago, Monday, when I came to work, I directed people, a couple of people in the department, to go through our arrest records, because that was the only way that we could determine how many ICE detainers were lodged against prisoners that we had for crimes unrelated to ICE. That meant that people go by hand through our arrest packets, our booking packets of over 3,000 arrests, 3,000 at minimum. So it was very timely, time-consuming, and they came up with some numbers. Initially, before we spent more time looking into it, we could only find eight persons that we thought had a detainer lodged against them from 2012 through February, I must say March 1st of 2017. That's more than five years, and we had eight people that we had a look at. So we took a look at those eight people. There were, there was one in 2012, I think five in 2013, and two in 2014, the early part of 2014. Of those eight, one person was ruled out because he was in here under arrest. The check with ICE revealed that he had a warrant for, he had a warrant, an ICE detainer warrant that fast-tracked him for deportation out of the country. Within three hours of the arrest, ICE took him to Suffolk County Courthouse, Suffolk County House of Detention overnight, and we were told he was taken to another part of the state to await deportation.
That was a warrant, not a...
That was an arrest warrant. It specifically said in the paperwork that it is not an ICE detainer, it is a warrant of arrest, federal warrant, and ICE served it. We did come up with six of those eight, right now, six of seven remaining people that did have ICE detainers lodged against them. All six of those people were arrested initially by Brookline Police Department on charges unrelated, had nothing to do with the ICE detainer. The ICE detainers were not located until they were fingerprinted, and we got the notification that they had ICE detainers and were able to confirm them. All six ended up, some of them could be bailed if they wanted to, some of them were unable to be bailed because of the charges that they had and/or the fact that they were held on default warrants. All eight, all six were brought to court the first opening of the court following their arrest. There were no persons held in custody beyond the time that they should have been brought to court. The seventh person is a little bit harder to determine because we're going back a couple of years, and there is a notation that an ICE detainer was faxed. There's also a notation that there is a, there was a warrant in effect for his arrest, a federal warrant, ICE warrant, that would have been served by them. One way or the other, the charges that he was held here with, he was not eligible for bail, he too was brought to court, and I don't know what happened to him once he got brought to court. We did make two contacts with ICE in 2016, and I spoke to you about them last week when we talked about the potential for the law change and what the local offices, local departments' responsibilities are. In August of 2016, we arrested a male subject for assault and battery, assault by means of a dangerous weapon. He came back. When we booked him, he made admissions that he was in the country illegally. We contacted ICE, they declined to do anything. He got bailed from our police station within a couple of hours of his arrest.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The first person you mentioned and the seventh person, you said they had ICE detainers, ICE warrants.
The first person had an ICE warrant, no detainer.
What is an ICE warrant? ICE is not a court.
In, well, in that case, we were able to find out that in 1998, he had deportation, he had deportation proceedings started against him by ICE. So ICE, my understanding is that if you get moved along in the process for deportation, a judge can issue a warrant. So the warrant, he had a criminal warrant.
Issued by a judge.
I'm assuming it was issued by a judge, we could find that out, but it, the way it's said, it said it's not a detainer, it is in a federal arrest warrant, and that was based on deportation proceedings started in 1998 that he did not follow through on. The seventh guy has both, could, has the same thing on an arrest warrant from ICE. We don't know the facts of it because we really didn't determine that till sometime later today, and we can't, couldn't verify it. And there's also a notification that a detainer may have been lodged, but we can't locate the detainer, so we're going to have to do some more homework on that. The other six were all detainers, all taken to court, all turned over to the Brookline Court when they should have been. None of those people were held with us. I talked about the first notification we made to ICE in 2016. The second one was the same thing. There's a woman placed under arrest. She, in the, in her paperwork, or in the paperwork that you got back on our warrants check and our criminal check, they did have something in her name we called ICE. They said that it probably was not her, they declined to come out. So that's been it for our contacts with ICE, and that's, so we confirmed that over this five-plus-year period, we've had six detainers, possibly seven. All of them went, taken to court. If ICE was going to come to get them, they would have picked them up in court, and the one person that was taken from our station was taken under arrest on a federal warrant for ICE violations and was taken by an ICE officer, not transported by us. So, and then the seventh one that's up in the air was still, he was, he couldn't be bailed from our station because of the offense he was charged with. He was taken to court as soon as it opened, the first time it could be. No extra time in our cell block. So that was a lot of work that was done by a couple of our people over the last week and a couple of days, and not wanting to go through that again, I think I told you that effective January 1st of 2017, we are tracking any contacts with ICE, any ICE detainers that are lodged at our facility. And we, and it's our intent at the times that we give our mid-year report when we release all of our statistics, that this will become part of our normal course of doing business. These statistics will be released publicly at the end of June and at the end of the year. We will be tracking those like we do the people that we arrest and the people that we stop. Of course, if a FOIA request is made in the interim, then we would, if we have information to give, we can give that out as well. So last week, we talked a little bit about the meeting that we had in February that myself and Deputy Grobman had with Tony Narro of the Diversity Commission, and we talked about a lot of things. But if I can back up, I was present at the meeting with Selectman Green when we were with the Diversity Committee back in the early part of January, and I'm glad you had mentioned Frank Farlow, because he has been really the guy, the man that brought it to our attention and brought the discussion forward that night, and probably a real good reason why we're here today. But he did bring that up. And in mid-February, I met with Tony Narro. We talked over the phone a couple of times, we went through the changes that he wanted to make. He told us about that court case that is going to be heard now, it's got pushed back, I think, to April 4th or April 14th.
April 4th.
April 4th, and it might take a stand as the legality or the non-legality, I guess you could say, of local law enforcement even honoring one of the ICE detainer requests. So, but he proposed, and you went over the proposals today of both the board and the Diversity Commission, and I told you last week that the department fully supports the recommendations of the combined board and Diversity Committee has come up with, and we still stand with you today on that. Recently, and you mentioned it, well, I don't know, you mentioned part of it, but recently, in response to some news articles, there's been a lot of inquiries coming into the police station about a request that some police departments were getting from the Border and Customs Security to ask if they could enter into agreements to use their cell blocks to house offenders. So we told our line to the people that called in was that we have, and it's true today, we have not been asked, we have not received a letter from the Border and Customs Security, and if we do get it, our intent is to not comply with that request. So that takes care of that. I think I want to talk a little bit about some of the conflict or some of the question about the fact that that was a special order and not a general order. Again, let's put it back in the timeframe of when it took place and what it was trying to do. Our role as police officers and as police departments is to try to provide as safer community as we can. The safer community as we can has us dealing with people that want to commit crimes, and our job is to try to make sure that they don't commit crimes on our residents or in our town. This had all the intentions and it said all the right things under the Department of Homeland Security and under President Obama's watch, that it was going to focus enforcement priorities on criminals, not on people that may have overstayed their visa, or people that may have entered into the country illegally and now have jobs, a family, really productive members of society. It was talking about people that would prey on people that were doing the right thing. I also, as chief, have the authority delegated to me through rules and regulations in the department and the Chapter 4197 on how the department is set up to implement special orders that, well, I won't confuse the issue, I'll read it. "Special policies and procedures of the department shall be promulgated by the issuance of a special order, and special orders are temporary orders issued by the chief of police and our superintendent outlining instructions covering particular situations." And for that reason, I put in a special order. Now, I would have to say that I did not run Now, I would have to say that I did not run it by the Board. I mean, I, there's a lot of special orders that are in effect covering our day-to-day operations and a lot of our personnel orders that are in effect that don't come in front of the Board because it's more or less the operations of the department. I know that we had discussions last week and the week before last about what are we gonna do going forward. And I know that there was talk about a general order that covers all of this, and you alluded to it in your conversation today, Mr. Chairman, and I think that that's the way to go. And we talked about it, we're mutual agreement on it. And I think that's our next step.
Okay. So, I think, thank you-
Does the town administrator know much?
No. We're, we're going to public comment, and we're not taking questions right now. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
He's gotta answer that question.
Can we ask you that, Chief?
I mean, that's sitting right there.
Okay. I, I have 21 people signed up. I have, the, the first person up is Ann Weaver. And I, she asked for a bit more time. And because she's been involved with organizing petition, I grant her five minutes. And then the next speaker after that is Emmanuel Howard. He's been involved with the Diversity Commission. He's asked for a bit more time. I've grant, I'll be granting him four minutes. And then after that, I'm hoping that we can keep it to three minutes each. And that'll, with the people signed up, that'll, that'll give us a bit more than an hour. And then I'll turn it over to anyone else who wishes to speak after that. If you, if, if you wanna get a place in line without having to line up, there is another sign-up sheet up front, so you can come up and sign up, and we'll take people, first come, first served. So, Ann Weaver, five minutes.
Five minutes. I'll talk fast. I'm not good at talking fast, but I'll try.
It is a fine debate, and you gave the chief over 15 minutes, so just to-
Thank you. So, my name is Ann Weaver, and I'm a resident of Brookline. Before I read my five-minute speech, which is less than five minutes, I just wanna say that some of my colleagues will be addressing some of the points the chief made, a few people down the list. So, I'm going to just table that for the moment and move forward. So, I began the petition to make Brookline a sanctuary city in policy as well as in name a few weeks ago, after discovering that we were not. We now have over 800 signatures, and I am submitting them to you tonight after reading our statement on the proposed policy recommendations by the DICR Working Group. Here is our statement. The selectmen, who are the Brookline Police Commissioners, should strike Paragraph 6, used to be Paragraph 7, now Paragraph 6, from the DICR Commission-proposed policy because it is unnecessary. It merely repeats the federal law prohibiting local governments from restricting communications between the police and the Immigration Customs Enforcement, or ICE, as I will call them now on. It's shorter. And more importantly, it opens the door to unilateral and unwanted practices by individual police officers. Brookline does not need to expressly adopt the language of the federal law into a local policy, particularly since that law is being challenged by other jurisdictions, including Chelsea and Lawrence, Massachusetts. As written, the town's proposed policy is neither strong enough to protect human rights nor to ensure accountability from Brookline Town officials. Seven additional clauses are necessary. The new policy must follow. One, Brookline will not partner with ICE in making any immigration arrests, sweeps, or raids. Two, Brookline Police will not inquire about the immigration status of any person and will not initiate the questioning or criminal investigation of any person for reasons related to their immigration status or suspected immigration status, including, but not limited to the color of their skin, their accent, their wearing of a hijab, or other religious clothes, the language they speak, or their country of origin or place of birth. Three, Brookline will provide a copy, including translated copies as necessary, of the policy prohibiting holding a person for ICE to any person in police custody with an ICE detainer. Four, Brookline Police will create a log of all communications with ICE, a general summary of which will be made available to the public. This will allow the Board of Selectmen, the Police Commissioners, and the public to monitor our cooperation with ICE and ensure that our police force is not commandeered into enforcing immigration law. Brookline is prohibited by federal law from restricting communications between ICE and our local police, but we are not prohibited from monitoring those communications. Five, Brookline will not create additional space nor utilize existing space to hold people detained for or by ICE in exchange for money, goods, and/or services, or personal, departmental, or collective profit, or promises of future profit. Neither will Brookline detain people for or by ICE for no reward or exchange. Six, Brookline will not make or modify any further policies or orders that relate to cooperation with ICE or any other federal law enforcement agency without a vote of the Board of Selectmen, the town's Police Commissioners, after a duly noticed public hearing. Seven, Brookline will file or join a lawsuit against President Trump and his executive order, seeking to have the threat to withdraw funding from sanctuary cities declared unconstitutional. In closing, if there remains additional work, which I'm gathering there, we certainly hope there will be, and I gather there will be anyway, to be done on this policy after these recommendations have been included, we request that the DICR Working Group be expanded to include two members of this campaign and at least two experts in immigration law. We believe that including such experts in the working group is critical to any successful policy development, and we are happy to suggest names of Brookline residents with this expertise if requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard, four minutes. Thank you. And next up is Harriet Rosenstein.
I'm the attorney.
The next one up is Karen.
So, Ann had about seven minutes plus, but I'll try to speak fast. I'm a SEDICer member and also a member of the Working Group on so-called sanctuary issues that has been referred to. My colleague, Tony Naro, did a very good job last week. I wasn't here, I couldn't stay that late. And he and I are going to be working on post-arrests and also home rate issues, and we've been in contact with each other, and we're gonna be talking about that in our next meeting, which is the 13th. So, Tony did a very good job. He was informative, he was interesting, entertaining, and for the most part, he hit the, the mark. But he mentioned the Giuliani case from the Second Circuit and made a lot about 8 USC 1373. And I think you might have gotten the wrong impressions about both, the import of both of these things, and I'll come back to them. Then you formulated a proposed new set of orders, which we have here and which are under discussion. And I'll mention the parts I believe you should reconsider changing. And I'll get, I'll get back to the Giuliani case and 8 USC 1373. On page one, General Order Number One. That's Roman numeral three, General Order Number One.
Right, we got it.
Okay. I would change the last sentence to read, because I think the way it's written here is vague and leads itself open to interpretation, and I'm not insulting a police officer or the police department. Change the last sentence to say, to read, "No person arrested shall be asked about that person's immigration status unless the question about such status pertains and is relevant to that particular arrest and investigation of that arrest. And that person has been read that person's Miranda rights in a language that the person Page two, item 5A. The person's name. I don't believe that the person's name should be on that type of record for many reasons. I practiced and handled criminal defense law for about 40 years, so I'm giving some background to what I'm about to say. Because an arrest is only an unproven charge, it alone carries no weight. It may be a mistake, and that happens many times, and I'm not, not insulting the Brookline Police about this, and I spoke about it to the chief early enough, so he won't hold it against me. The charge can be dropped by the prosecution, and that's called a NOLPROS, N-O-L-P-R-O-S-S, and that happens many times. The charge can be dismissed by the trial-level judge, by the state appellate court, and by a federal judge.
What other changes are you suggesting?
Okay, I'm just explaining why. Also, because you wouldn't want the word "arrest" to be on an employment application. And you should also read Secretary Galvin's comments on, on arrest as it pertains to FOIA requests, that maintaining persons' privacy-
Mr. Howard, you, you can submit your full rationale in writing, but, you know, there's, I got a whole room full of people here.
Yeah, I understand, okay. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go further, fast. Let me finish these things here. The, on item six, the, the change in tone is very, very important. And it should read that the department is not required to, at minimum, it should read that the department is not required to send, instead of though not required, is not prohibited. And the tone is important, and it relates to the, what Tony mentioned about the Giuliani case. If you read the Giuliani case, it's about the, New York City actually didn't fully argue what it should have argued, and that's the reason why the Giuliani case came against the city.
And at last?
I'm sorry?
At last?
Yes, I'm gonna go on here.
No, last.
Yeah.
You can submit the rest of your comments in writing.
Yes, yes. But I'm gonna look at my notes to see what I wanna see. If you give me a minute.
No, we've given you six.
Yeah, I know you have, but, and a point that, that the previous speaker made about item six, I think is very valid as well. Thanks very much, and I'll send you this in writing. You better believe it. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and hold people to three minutes. Karen, and then Savion Kohn is up after that. Karen from, I can't.
Abbot Street.
Going once. Savion Kohn is up. Marty Rosenthal is up after that.
Tonight, you vote on the repeal of a special order you've stated you didn't know existed until a small group of residents told you it did. Town Administrator Mel Klechner, Selectwoman Nancy Daly, and Chief O'Leary hold the same positions today they did in 2012, when the special order allowing cooperation with ICE was issued. Your handling of this process has ensured the public can't know who is responsible and that no one will be held accountable. The most benign interpretation of your actions indicates shockingly poor oversight of an issue you know this town cares about deeply. We've proved the special order existed and that Brookline is not a sanctuary town, no matter how one defines that word. Next, on February 10th, we requested a public record to learn how many people Brookline has detained for ICE in the last five years. A week after requesting the record, we were told that record would cost us $675.99. Within hours, residents donated that money. When the check was taken in, we were told Brookline doesn't issue receipts for money paid, that the town has no timestamp, no date stamp, and there is no way citizens can know or prove, there's no way that citizens can prove they have requested a public record in Brookline. That is either purposeful, incompetent, or both. A month after the original public records request and after the deadline set by the public records law, at 5:43 PM tonight, the town emailed the information that Chief O'Leary just gave you. Can we have our $675 back? Residents asked to meet with Town Administrator Mel Klechner to discuss ways we, including those among us who are immigration attorneys, could be helpful to you and to this meeting. Mel Klechner declined to meet with us. I've learned that I'm not alone, and that many residents share my concern about what is happening in Brookline. The assumption of good faith in you and your governance no longer exists for many of us.
Mr. Rosenthal and Mariela Ames is next.
Yes, thank you. I'll be disagreed with afterwards, and I'm gonna disagree a little with- I'll be disagreed with afterwards, and I'm going to disagree a little with what was just said. I do think that the town is approaching this appropriately. And I've had an involvement in this since 1985, the first sanctuary resolution, when I was a selectman, in 2006, when I co-authored the resolution along with Nelson Briller, a PAX board member, and I'm still co-chair of PAX. And that was successful with town meeting in 2006, and it incorporated the one from 1985. Those reflect great community interest, as does the crowd in the room. And ever since the November election, I've heard from dozens of people saying, are we a sanctuary city? Are we a sanctuary town? What are we doing? Partly because of Frank's passing, I haven't been able to reply to individuals. I've just been involved. Frank and I first decided to approach the chief at the November town meeting. And I asked the chief, are we following a 2006 resolution? And he said, so far as I know, we are. Now, that 2012 order appeared out of the blue in January. I know the chief recalled it at that time, but when we talked in November, I don't think he did. But the fact of the matter is that that's now a dead piece of paper. And I think what this board has done to create the working group was the appropriate thing to do. I'm a lawyer. I've been a lawyer for 40-odd years, odd in every sense of the word. And I appreciate the fact that laws have deliberate processes. I do criminal law as well as some other things, and a lot of criminal laws are not handled with deliberate process. And this is a complicated area. I think that federal statute is kind of tricky. And I'll get to that in a minute on paragraph six. The other I want to mention is that the, this board jumped into action January 3rd. And Frank and I had a meeting set up with Bernard and the police chief for that week. And that happens to be the week that Frank had just died, so we called it off. Instead, this board held a meeting, and I got to talk briefly at that meeting, and you initiated the working group, which was a good thing, and I commend them and Tony Narro for the work they've done. Now, let me get to the proposal. One very minor thing, I'm not sure the word "detainer" is self-explanatory. I think ICE is now using the terminology administrative warrants. Administrative warrants. But that can be dealt with as a minor issue. So what I really want to get to is paragraph six. I think that six has, at a minimum, some confusing syntax issues. And I would suggest, I don't see the harm of restating a legal obligation, because I think that should be transparent and part of the published policy and not, I don't agree with a previous speaker that said if that's the law, we don't have to say it. I'd like it to be in here. But I think it should be reworded. And I would take the required by law part and put it at the beginning and say something like this, "To the extent and only to the extent required by law," and then continue with some of that language. Now, my other question on this is, you can't prohibit or restrict, I know that's in the statute, but I think you could encourage. And I don't know how ICE and Homeland would interpret the word "encourage," but I don't think it violates the law, encourage people not to take these steps. And finally, you could educate offices as to the town's values. And I think everybody knows right now that Brookline cares about being sanctuary. That gets me to my last comment. The term "sanctuary," I realize it's a red flag. I think it's a good one. And I think you should think about keeping it for symbolic value. It doesn't have any definition. It's basically, it reminds me of, Harry Belafonte said recently, "The civil rights movement has been a struggle, but not a movement." I think it's important to ratify that movement and keep the term. Last, I'm glad that you're doing other things, and I'm glad that there's some attention to the question of special orders and what should have public hearings.
Thank you.
Can I, Marty, can I ask you a question? Just want to clarify something. The special order, as I understand, as I recall, was discovered when Tony Narro discussed this with Superintendent Gropman, and the two of them were able to identify this special order. Is that a correct?
Well, I was at the first working group meeting, and that's the first I heard about it. I don't, I don't think Tony's here. He's done a wonderful job on this.
No, he's not here.
I can't answer that question as to how and when that came up.
(INAUDIBLE) policy. (INAUDIBLE). We couldn't find it in, on the web or in PDF or on your computer. We just didn't know.
I mean, I was at your meeting, I think, January 3rd, and the first working group meeting. I can't even say, I would have it in my folder whether it was in those packets. There was a packet at both. I don't know. And I know that it's at the working group that I first heard about it.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, I think Superintendent Gropman found it and provided it to Tony. That's my understanding.
Certainly, the working group knew of it very early in their process, I think, at their first meeting. Exactly how, I don't know.
Can you just say again, you said you don't think ICE is using the word "detainer." Now they're using some other term. What was the other?
Administrative warrant.
Well, I've got access to a training bulletin by a public counsel office, Committee for Public Counsel, where a good friend of mine runs the Immigration Unit or the Immigration Law. And they sent out a training bulletin referring to administrative warrants. Now, I think the point legally is that there's a gigantic difference between a warrant issued by a real judge under the Constitution and to satisfy the Fourth Amendment, as opposed to ICE bureaucrats, basically, and ICE cops, and also, frankly, immigration court judges. I choke when I call them judges. They're not real judges appointed by presidents or ratified by even the Senate. They're administrative judges appointed by the Attorney General. So anyway, the point is that I'd be, I don't know if you need to be careful about using the word "detainer," and then later you start getting something else. Maybe you should have a definition. Detainer shall include any warrant, any request to hold a person that's not issued by, I think they call Article III judges, which is real judges.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty. Ms. Ames, and after Ms. Ames is Elizabeth Urbano. Yeah, okay.
Good evening. First, to clarify, how is it that the Special Order 2012-06 got to the hands of the Diversity Commission, which you gave a charge to but failed to give this order, was because there was a Freedom of Information request made? And it was produced finally right prior to a meeting of the Decer Commission, I believe. It wasn't, it was because of the push of the public and because of this group that is pushing for the provisions to be included in the policy. Chair Wyszynski, you had chair with the public about having let all town meeting members know about this important hearing. And I'm going to ask here to please all town meeting members, there are 246, if they can raise their hands, please.
To what end? I am raising my hand.
Yes.
To what end?
The point is that these are issues that affect and are important to the community. And their participation, these elected members representing the public, are barely here. That is the point. Last week, Selectman Daly went out of your way to let us know that the selectmen had nothing to do with the Special Order 2012-06. That is very, very sad, disappointing. I could say a lot more about that. So if it wasn't you, the question now is to the town administrator. Were you involved in the Special Order 2012-06? Did you give the green light? Town Administrator Kleckner, the question is for you. And this is a public hearing.
Well, she chooses not to answer, so please continue.
If the board wants me to answer the question, I will.
We, we heard from the chief how it came to be, and I don't think--
It isn't clear to me. This is the reason I'm asking, because you didn't let the chief answer the question.
If this is how you want to use your time, that's fine with me.
Yes, it is how I want to use my time. I'm asking questions that I think we deserve the answers to. I don't think I need to say that I strongly support the provisions that this group has worked very hard and is pushing for. There are many, many brown people that are pulled over on the streets for no good reason except the color of their skin. Brookline, for some reason, has the policy of arresting people driving without a license. This is not the case in other communities. And again, my question is, why is it that we have the policy of arresting people for that charge? And the chief of police is here. I'd like to, again, to, for him to answer the question.
Okay, this is a hearing on a policy?
Yes.
And please move on.
Which is exactly about the policy.
Okay.
Because once the persons are arrested, then their fingerprints will be sent to the FBI and then will make their way to ICE. And these arrests do not need to happen. So the question again is, why do we have that policy?
Okay.
Can we have the chief answer?
Okay. As we, as we go through, if there's time at the end, we can, I can have the chief come up.
I don't know how much time I have.
You've used four and a half minutes.
Okay.
So please conclude.
Thank you. I could tell you that as someone who interprets in courts on a daily basis, I encounter daily people who have done nothing wrong but have the skin color, be brought to court for driving without a license. In Brookline, again, it is an arrestable offense. I just heard, I just interpreted for a case in which a man who was at a parking lot in the Burger King, at a Burger King, was approached by officers, doing nothing, he wasn't even driving. He was asked to get out, and he ended up in court, held with an ICE detainer.
Okay.
So this is something that happens frequently. This is why it is related to the policy. Thank you.[1417.26][1417.26](APPLAUSE).
Elizabeth, and then Charles. Can I ask Mr. Kleckner, is there a Burger King in Brookline?
No, there's not.
No. After Elizabeth is Charles Mora. I'm sorry, I can't read the handwriting. 76 Green Street? Okay.
Thank you. This will be very brief, much more--
State your name.
Oh, my name is Elizabeth Urbano.
Okay.
Much more personal than political. And I don't know if you do realize, or if you've considered, perhaps you have, but I'd like to make it clear that a fear exists, that people are afraid, and I say this as the wife of an immigrant who is not a U.S. citizen. He is a green card holder. We have family members, we have very close friends, we have acquaintances that run the gamut of immigration statuses. And I'd just like to make it known that a fear exists, and that fear affects children, that fear affects families. And I'd like to ask that you please consider your ability to reduce or eliminate that fear by strengthening your language and your policies in accordance with the recommendations given by Ann Weaver tonight.
Thank you.
That's all I'd like to say.[1504.15][1504.15](APPLAUSE).
Charles, and Charlotte Craig is after Charles.
Thank you. My name is Charlie Homer.
Homer, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's my handwriting. So I'm a pediatrician, which is why my handwriting is so bad. But relevant to the present context, I had the good fortune of serving as the head of Human Services Policy in the Department of Health and Human Services in the Obama administration until the change in presidential administration. That included oversight of the Office of Refugee Resettlement. Our office did a number of important, relevant research analyses. One was documenting the terrible harm that occurs to children when their parents are deported. No great surprise, but we've documented it very clearly. And again, I think that's extremely relevant to the current case. In addition, we were responsible for the unaccompanied children coming through Central America and trying to place them with their parents regardless of their documentation status. The current administration has said when parents are identified for these children, they will then be eligible for deportation, which of course would be both tragic for the children, would increase actually federal costs, because these children would then be under costs of the state. So for those reasons, I think we should do all that we can, including some of the recommendations, particularly relevant to paragraph six, to minimize as much as possible our interactions with ICE to the least that we're possible to do. Thank you for your attention.
Charlotte Craig, and then John Bowman.
Hi, thank you. My name is Charlotte Craig, and I live and work in Brookline. And I'll speak very briefly, because I think my points have mostly been spoken to, but I'm just speaking to you tonight in support of the repeal of the Special Order 2012-06. And I would like Brookline to be a true sanctuary city, and would like the residents' policy that Ann read before put in place. I realize this is a very complex issue. I am echoing what the person said before and focusing on the scenario where police are currently able to arrest someone for driving without a license, one stop for another minor traffic violation, such as changing lanes without signaling. I spoke with the chief of police the other week, and he said that it was at the officer's discretion whether to arrest or not, which I think is problematic. Other communities do not have such a law. And with the understanding that being arrested, even for such a minor thing as driving without a license, can cause you to be fingerprinted, and then the fingerprints are sent into the FBI database automatically, which ultimately can involve ICE and deportation, seems way too harsh and something we should be working against. We could avoid this simply by changing this policy to it not being an arresting offense. And with imminent threats of increased hiring for ICE, I think it's imperative that we act quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1711.15][1711.15](APPLAUSE). Mr. Bowman and David Claffeters after Mr. Bowman.
I, my main point that I would like to make tonight is to challenge an assumption that I heard in the working group meeting, the one that I attended, and also that I heard expressed at the beginning of this meeting, in which I interpreted it as saying that in all cases, Brookline will obey federal laws. In 1854--
Your name?
My name is John Bowman. In 1854, local officials in Boston bowed to pressure from the President of the United States and obeyed the law, the Fugitive Slave Act, and returned a man by the name of Mr. Anthony Burns to slavery in Virginia, ignoring their conscience and the conscience of the public, which overwhelmingly supported his protection as a free man. Now, the proposed policy represents an important step in the right direction, and I appreciate the work that's been done on it, although I don't like General Order Number Six either. But regardless of what policies and procedures are in place, there may come a time when Brookline officials will need to use judgment-- Brookline officials will need to use judgment and exercise courage to do what is morally right, even if it may be against federal law or executive orders. I urge you to be prepared to take such a courageous stance, and I want you to know that if that comes to pass, I will stand with you. And I hope that the whole town of Brookline would do the same.
Mr. Clafter and Emily Dean and Ed Dean? You can come up separate. No?
David Clafter from Winter Road. I want to echo what the previous speaker just said, that little historical reflection is very useful. I think that we have to recognize that we are in a very changed period right now, that the president has made it quite clear that ICE will function to the detriment of the well-being of large sections of our community, of our country. For this reason, I think that just sort of a business-as-usual wording on question six specifically, to leave it as a kind of a discretionary option to talk to ICE, rather than just to make it very clear that what we will allow at maximum is what is legally required, is very important. It should be very, very clear, as many people have said, that the town does not want police discretionary contact with ICE. I would further echo the previous speaker's statement that at some points, we might want to be prepared to not cooperate with some federal laws or particularly executive orders. And I think a good part of our population would support that very strongly. The original speaker's presentation, I think, covered much of what needs to be done and said, so thank you for your work on this.
Next up is, I'm having trouble with the handwriting, Frances Nason, 210 Reservoir Road. Did I-- Then, okay. Going once, going twice. Laura Bradford?
No, that was a mistake.
Okay. Jamesy Gifford?
No, that was a mistake. The next--
I agree. He thought we were signing.
Oh, okay. So--
All the shots--
Okay. Jordan Shaggy?
Yeah.
Nope. Maya Schonestadt? Oh, okay. Betsy Lowry.
Hi, well, I've learned a lot at this meeting, and I came to, I heard Mr. Pharoah and the chief speak on, whatever that was, last week.
Nero.
Mr. Nero, what did I call?
Pharoah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nero. Anyway, I really appreciate the work that's been done on this so far. And I know from what the chief said, and the fact that he has voluntarily got this going right now already, that his plans are in the right direction. Hearing all of the details, like in Ann Weaver's presentation, a lot of the things that she's saying are things that he has already said he's going to do. But I think it is important to have those written down. For example, the first one is that they are not, the police will not be asking the immigration status of anybody. And then it says, unless the question pertains to a criminal investigation, but I don't think the immigration status generally, you know, I don't know how that would happen. Maybe it does happen, but I think immigration is different from criminal status. So I think that might be able to be changed. I agree that number six, I like the way Marty said number six should be, it should just say that we're not doing anything that we're not required to do. And I also, hearing about this, the arrest warrants for people without licenses, I know that's a huge problem, and one of the reasons many illegal immigrants don't have licenses is because they're not allowed to get the licenses. And so I think that that should be also a police policy, that that is not something that the police will do, is arrest people because they don't have a license. For many of these people, they would love to have a license, and they just can't get one. So those are things I've thought of. I think maybe, I don't feel that it's really changing the policy. I think just maybe more details should be added into it so that it's very, very clear. And anyway, I appreciate everybody's work. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Crane?
Crane.
Crane. Okay. Sorry.
So my name is Christina Crane, and I live on Klaflin Road. So I would like to echo the statements that Ann made this evening, and reiterate that there is a fear. There is a fear of residents around how immigrants are handled and how immigration policy is seen, especially by the town government. And I think those policies need to be coming from a courageous place, and a courageous and moral place. And we all have a responsibility to come there together and work together as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've come to the end of the folks signed up. Does anyone else wish to speak? Come on up.
I have a question.
State your name.
Robert Labrie, I live on Kenwood Street. Let's say that we, Brookline does not sign any agreements with ICE, and the police will not act as junior ICE agents. What is to stop ICE from simply coming in and taking people?
Nothing.
Absolutely nothing. I think it's important to be clear on this, that this nothing we're deciding tonight will ever stop that from happening. Is that true?
That is true.
Except organization by the community, either to impede or publicize what's going on, as well as organization by the community to vote and address this issue at the political level. And I think that, you know, we can do certain things, we cannot break the law. But the community, along with us, can be a much more powerful force. And our statement had four elements. The fourth element was community engagement, whether it's through houses of worship, providing sanctuary, whether it's through organized groups that cast light on immigration raids, like is happening in Philadelphia and other cities, or other steps. That is the only thing that's going to stop this, like the way that the original executive order was delayed by the demonstrations at airports and elsewhere last month.
Come on up.
Hi there. My name's Rebecca Uchel, I live on Park Street. I have a procedural question, which is, the gentleman before me was able to address a question to the selectman and have his question answered by two people. And somehow, I've noted that the chief of police was up here, and he was not instructed to answer a question. I noted very valid questions addressed to the selectman earlier with the prompt, "Do you want to just wait out the clock?" I find it absurd that not all of the questions can be answered. My procedural question to you, because I actually was in the hearing last week about the two police officers, and a lot of people had questions, and they were instructed, "No, this is a transparent process, everyone understands how it goes, here's not the place to ask these questions." My procedural question to you is, when is the opportunity to address questions to the selectmen? Is it now? Because this is a special hearing on these topics, and this is a sincere question.
Some questions have been submitted and answered.
Yeah.
And other questions, some we may not know the answer, and some we choose not to answer.
Okay, so that's the answer, is that some questions should be answered now, other questions you choose not to answer. And that's what's happening here, is you're choosing which questions to answer.
Yes.
All right, thank you for your honest answer.
So I'm closing the--
My name is Cindy Rowe. I just wanted to offer a minute of comment. It's not often that I comment on local issues, so I, but I feel like I need to speak up on this. We are in a time and an administration that has no appreciation for immigrants in our community, no appreciation for celebration of diversity that our nation was founded on. And it is not often that we feel the impact of federal regulations so directly in our local issues. So I just wanted to offer a comment from my perspective, that I hope that our town will be thinking about these issues very deeply, and holding up our values, our moral code as we proceed, and make every effort not to cooperate with any of these rules and executive orders that are coming down from an administration that doesn't share the values of most of the people in our town government and in our town as a whole.
Thank you. So I'd like to bring it back to the board. It seems to me there are things in the policy that I think we should consider voting tonight. And then there are some things, I'm a little reluctant to wordsmith on the fly.
No, but I think we do need to take a look at some of the language based on some of the things we heard.
Right. So for example, I would propose that we vote section one--
Right.
--to repeal the special order tonight. I would propose we vote--
Thank you.
--section two, where we are declining ICE's invitation to be deputized ICE agents. I think it's important to try and get some of the general order language moving forward as quick as we can. I would propose that we vote paragraph one.
I'm going to ask that we hold the general orders, because we heard a lot of comments tonight.
Okay.
And I think we just need to read back through the comments--
Okay.
--and the general orders, and see, you know, where there may be some reasons to change some of what is--
Right, I think--
--on the page.
Section six, for example, I would be inclined to take Marty Rosenthal's suggestion to flip the paragraph at the very least, and have it to say something like, "To the extent and only to the extent required by law."
I do think, I think we need to compare this with some of what we've heard tonight, and that's going to take some time.
Right.
So I agree with Nancy Daylin that we shouldn't begin to make changes to number three, general orders, until we have an opportunity to look at the materials, to digest what we've heard tonight, and to incorporate--
Okay.
And perhaps--
And I'd also--
--use wordsmithing as well, but--
Right.
I agree with that, except for item two. I think we really need to have in place a policy that we will not comply with an ICE detainer. I think that's important. You know, that and not entering into agreements with the Attorney General under section 287-G, which is item two, are really what is central to sort of the general concept of so-called sanctuary city, which, as you know, I'm not a big fan of, because I think it plays into the little hands of Donald Trump. But nonetheless, I mean, those are really the key components of what we're calling sanctuary cities. I think we need to vote those two especially.
But if you want to vote that tonight, then I think we need to say detainer or administrative warrant, just so we're covered. I don't know, Marty had a little more language than that, but I think, you know, I'm sort of reluctant to try to readjust this right--
But I'm going to agree with Selectman Green in that I think it's important that we get moving with that policy. We can, when this comes back, if we need to adjust the exact wording, we can adjust the exact wording, but I think--
Okay, then I would just propose that we add the word, the words--
Or administrative warrant.
--administrative warrant after detainer.
Okay, so the vote is going to be-- The language up through, in the introductory paragraph, section one, which repeals the order, section two, which declines ICE's invitation to be deputized, and then three general orders, that introductory sentence, and then section two. And then we will, can I suggest we remand this back to the working group? Do we want to do that?
Well, you know, Mr. Nero wasn't here tonight, though, so--
Or who's going to lead this effort?
I think Bernard.
Thanks.
Let me point out one other thing. In section two, we refer--
I'll work with you.
--to general order 3.1, but we're not--
Yeah, that's, it's 3.0.
Okay, so--
There's a later version.
So I'd also propose that we vote number seven of the general orders, which is simply, we make sure that the changes are transmitted to all police officers. I understand that we're just voting one thing now, and that there'll be future changes, presumably, but I think it's important that we ensure that whatever changes we're making get into the hands of police officers as soon as possible.
And let me just ask the chief, is this o-- Is this okay, as an interim step, voting paragraph two and seven in the general orders?
Paragraph two is the 287? We've never joined that.
No, no. General orders, section two, no person shall be held in custody based on the existence of a detainer.
We've said that--
Right, okay.
We've argued that, yes.
So we're--
We're okay?
Right, okay. So this is intended to be an interim step, to give you policy direction immediately, and then the others will be coming back to you with wordsmithing and also digesting some of the things we heard tonight.
And I think I provided the board at some point, was the February 16 memo from Superintendent Morgan that spells out what we've done since May 16?
Did we get that?
Yes, I think--
I may have gotten two permission.
I don't think we all got it.
Okay, I'll make sure everybody gets it.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, what it does, it's the steps, and it proves that no one's held on ICE detainers at all.
Okay.
I just want to ask the chief, though, because one of my concerns, I know people want us to have, like, no contact at all with ICE, but my daughter-in-law works for a nonprofit in an organization that's trying to fight--
in the, in an organization that's trying to fight sex trafficking and so forth, so I'm very aware that undocumented immigrants are perhaps at higher numbers than, than people with, you know, citizenship, sometimes trapped into this, this kind of thing. And I want us to be able to take, you know, should we learn of anything like that in Brookline, to take all possible steps, you know, to help these people. And, and, so I, so I'm, well, the, in some cases, it's other immigrants that are the bad guys in that situation. And I don't want to, I don't want to close off an opportunity to, you know, to, if there's an egregious situation, that our department would be able to contact ICE in that sort of situation.
I can give you two incidents where we did that and both of them referred to by Tony Nero last week. One of them was a human trafficking case that took place up in Coolidge County area. They were all from China and we did contact ICE. They had no record of their coming into the country, so they couldn't help us, but we did try because both the women who were performing the service and the men, man who was running it were from the same country and we were under the impression, we were led to believe from some of the evidence that we found, that they could have been working their way off that they got, how they got into this country. The one that I think stands out in our minds, when we had the abduction and rape in Coolidge County of the woman by two...
Was that in 2009?
Yes, by two men. They were both in the country illegally. We verbally contacted ICE and we talked to ICE and we asked for their cooperation in making sure of their true identities and how they were in the country and were they in here legally or not.
But they did get prosecuted under our laws and...
They were both, they both pled guilty to aggravated rape and other associated charges and they took a plea of, an excess of 25 years in state prison. So, they're currently incarcerated. We've been told when they come out, they're going to be deported immediately.
Okay.
Okay, so the vote...
If I could, I endorse what you say, there are times when we don't want to cheat ourselves, that we are working to make the community safer and let's go, use what we can to take, to get a criminal off the street. I mean, that's what we're here for. We're not looking to abuse it, but we're looking to use it in ways that you just said.
Except, I guess my concern is, or my question is, why do we need to get ICE involved if we're in the process of prosecuting someone?
Because, because we have to learn their identity as much we can learn about them.
But don't we get their identity through the FBI? I mean, and ICE learns about that, the fingerprints. But I mean, we're not contacting ICE directly, we're just going through the process to identify them.
But, well, I think we want to make sure that we, who we're charging, we know who they are, we know if they've been wanted or have been suspected of other things in the past. We don't use it on a minor crime, we would never do that, but we're not talking about minor crimes here. And I think in the case of the human trafficking that we had, maybe that's how we're going to discover that the, that some of the people that are participating in crimes are actually victims. We don't know, but I mean, you read the stories in other parts of the countries, that people are forced to come into the country and sell themselves until they pay off the debt of the person that got them in here. I mean, that's, if, we can't tie our hands if we have a tool to find out the true story. I think that's the way I want to leave it.
Well, we're, we're not voting this.
We need to think that through, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to vote Sections One, Two, and then in the general orders, Paragraph Two and Seven.
Okay.
Got that, Kate? So, that's, that's the motion. So, we're moving to rescind, to not accept ICE deputy, be ICE deputies, no person shall be held in custody for, solely for a detainer, and then that we will transmit the general order to the police officers. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and then this will be coming back to us for the, for the rest of it and digesting what we heard tonight and see where it goes. Okay, thank you very much, some very interesting, informative comments.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I got a lot of great ideas from the presentation by people. Even those who were hostile to us and think we're the devil, some of their ideas were very good, so...
Well, I think we should thank Anthony Nero and the entire Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Commission, who did a lot of work on this. Thank you.
Yeah, we're adjourning.